Are you ready, Dawn?
I am.
Look at the minutes for December the 18th. Is there any corrections?
I believe that under the Highway Department discussion, we had talked about them, someone from the department checking all the gravel pits. Because it specifically mentions the one where we've had someone come in and talk about it, but I thought we left that at the point where we were supposed to be double-checking them all, since we knew there was a discrepancy with the active area versus the area that we're taxing, the total area.
As I remember, the 18th, we discussed specifically the line pit to give us an idea of the difference between what the photos were showing and what we actually felt that was in commercial use or we were taking gravel out of. I don't believe we mentioned on the 18th anything about the other gravel pits, though I think that's something that we probably need to discuss with Michael today about, maybe we need to look at all of them.
It could have been in the meeting before, I'm just...
I don't know that that's a correction.
I think it was an earlier meeting.
The meeting before that.
I believe so.
Excuse me.
You have a motion to approve.
I would move to approve December 18th.
Do I have a second? I will second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. December the 26th, we had a special meeting. It was by, I was on the telephone and I think Terry, you were present at the courthouse, right?
Yes.
At that meeting, we rescinded the burn ban for Lincoln County with Resolution 22. Are there any corrections to those minutes?
Dawn called me about a telephone meeting and I was on my way to town, so I just came here.
What is the procedure for that typically? Because I had called in to ask Dawn if we could rescind it, and I know she said we had to have a session to do it. So, and I know she tried to call me and I didn't pick up when she called back after I called her, which is fine, I mean, I knew the two of you could do it on two votes, but is that, um, do we have some sort of resolution where the chairman can rescind a burn ban or does it have to be?
I think it has to be done by vote. I may, now maybe we could stipulate in the resolution that we did for the burn ban, maybe we could stipulate in there that he would have the authority, I don't know.
I would, I would be against that. I don't think one person needs to be doing that for the county. I live in the northeast part of the county and certainly the weather in the northeast part of the county is different than southwest part of the county. I really think that we probably all three need to be involved in that, or at least two of us. Are there any corrections? No, do I hear a motion to approve?
I would move to approve.
Do I have a second?
December 22nd.
I will second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Abstain, I wasn't there.
December the 29th, Dawn, I do have one there. The last, second to last paragraph, you have, we tabled, or I tabled that till January the 9th, it should read the 8th, because 9th on a Tuesday. Have a motion to approve? Or approve? Approve with the correction made.
I don't think so, there's a lot of numbers in there, but I'm sure Dawn checked them.
I move we approve as corrected. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. I have a letter from the Kansas Association of Counties, I'll just read part of it before I give it to the rest of the commissioners. The budget for the Kansas Association of Counties is $1,003,069. The formula for figuring the dues for the county is all member counties pay a base of $500. The remaining balance is split equally and allocated to counties based on population 50% of it and on assessed evaluation 50%. No county pays more than 3.75% of the total dues allocated to all counties, which means that in 2018, no county will pay more than $16,887.19. The Lincoln County dues are $1,418.73. This year, they are providing webinars on Wednesdays and there is a charge, a year, the yearly charge for that, one-time charge is $50, which makes our total, KC is asking for $1,468.73. Do you want to make a decision on the dues this time?
I will.
Did you look at Alexis?
Yes, I mean, I believe it's a benefit to us right now. I think that we should try to utilize the webinars this year. I know that's something they talked about.
$50?
Yeah, for training.
Yes, I would also say that each county is given a vote. It's not based on your population votes, it's a, everybody has an equal vote for the Association of Counties, which gives us a little bigger voice than we normally would have. Do I have a motion to approve payment of this?
I would move to approve the payment of the KC dues, $1,468.73.
Have a second? I will second. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion is carried. I believe you're up, Kelly.
Well, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you, Miss Kelly.
I just felt, it's been a while since I've kind of given you guys an update on economic development stuff, so I thought end of the year, first of the year, should be a good, just a good opportunity to do that. I had a column in last week's newspaper with just kind of some update on some business stuff, but I thought I'd kind of go through it a little bit more with you guys. Just in terms of the past year, there's been 10 new businesses that have opened in the county. In the last four years, since I've been involved, we've grossed about 40 new businesses in those four years. We have, this past year, we had a couple businesses that are closed. Only one do I kind of feel has, is directly related to the economy where they just kind of said, "Ag economy stinks, I'm closing," and that was a small shop. Another business closed, the owner died, so that was something not preventable, or at least I couldn't prevent. And another business, they kind of sold to a new business that's opening their spot. So, for the most part, I feel pretty good about, you know, more businesses opening by far than closing up. We've had three businesses transition ownership, and I always feel that's just as important really as a new business opening up, because we definitely don't want to lose businesses that are here and to see new investment, a new group of people coming in and making sure that whatever services there is still, is still doing good. We've had one business that had a pretty big, big expansion with Lincoln Farm Supply becoming a versatile dealer here. Some other, just kind of non-specifically related to businesses, though, two years ago, or at the end of 2016, we worked to have Lincoln County be considered an e-community or an entrepreneurship community through Network Kansas. And what that's given us the ability to do is, they, we grant, we were granted entrepreneurship tax credits that we could then sell to raise money for a fund, our e-community fund. And this is specifically for business loans, that's kind of the majority of what the fund is there to do. But they also, Network Kansas also lets us use those funds for some very specific types of trainings or workshops or programs. And so, this year, since 2017, was kind of our first real year as part of the program. I have an e-community leadership team that we did a business survey to try and get an idea from out there, businesses, what is it that they really need a lot of help with? Is there anything that's a common topic where we really need to focus on that or, you know, some odd things that maybe we're not really thinking about? And through that, through that business survey, in December, we brought in Linda Sutton. She's a small business consultant, just kind of come in for a day, sit down with businesses that, kind of an open conversation, a confidential conversation, you know. So, we had 10 businesses that sat down with her and of those, there was one person that's considering opening a new business, a couple businesses that, where there's someone considering purchasing the existing business, or maybe it's a business owner considering a transition. And then a couple other businesses where they're existing, they got some ideas for expansion or they've got a problem, they just need to kind of talk it out. So, I thought that was a really good opportunity and there's going to be some follow-up here in January between those businesses and Linda Sutton as well. Another thing that we're going to be using these e-community funds for, I'm working with the schools to develop a youth entrepreneurship challenge. It's kind of like a Shark Tank type of thing where businesses really, students learn about starting up a business, they have to put together their own business plan, they have to come up with a pitch, they're going to have to do it in front of judges, and they got a trade show booth. So, I've heard good things about other counties that have done this, and so I'm excited about being able to do that here. And we've got some other, like I said, through this e-community thing where we can use the funds for some specific workshops, so we're going to be trying to provide those to business owners here this year. Another big project, the airport, as you guys know, this past year, they got a $720,000 grant to do the grading of the, for a new runway. In this, in the fall, another grant application was submitted to KDOT to continue with that project for the grading, or the concrete of it. And so, we probably won't know that until sometime in the spring. I think there, those announcements were in March or April, May, something like that, so it's probably going to be that timeframe before we hear anything on that. But that's another big project that's kind of on the radar. Sylvan, I've been working a lot with them of the last couple of years in terms of the housing grant and cleanup. One thing, when they applied for a housing grant a couple of years ago, the response really from the state was, "We cannot give grants to communities who don't take pride in themselves and don't do, aren't doing cleanup and aren't maintaining what they've got." So, I'm really proud of Sylvan, they've, they've worked very hard, the city has, to hire a code enforcement officer to get a big community cleanup done, to get some problems taken care of that have just been out there for a while. And I think going through town, it looks a lot better there. And so, they have applied again this year, or this past summer anyway, for another housing grant. It's a CDVG program, it would be $300,000 is what they applied for. When the state came in and did the site visit, I felt much better about this site visit than the one application before. So, here mid-January, I think we're going to find out whether they're awarded for that or not, and I'm not on wood that they'll get that.
Is that rehab or is that new?
It's demolition and rehab.
Rehab.
Yeah, they had to, and I guess that, we were here at some point, probably June, talking about the house that the county owns. And so, I can't remember the exact numbers, but seven or eight houses that were on the demolition list and then seven or eight houses that were on a rehab list. So, and I do believe that the application is there, but if the county wanted to move forward with demoing that house, you guys can do that and it's not going to hurt the housing grant. If anything, it's just going to open up money for another demolition or something like that should one pop up. Also, this summer, I had those two interns and that was, it was a wonderful, I felt so blessed to have the two interns that I did, because they were really outstanding. And so, with the old high school project, I think we've got some, a couple really good concepts to move forward with on that. It's been a little slow since the interns have gone back to school, but last week, I was informed with the old high school that we were approved by KDHE for a brownfields targeted assessment program. And right now, you know, I think whenever you talk about the old high school, there's a lot of talk about how much asbestos there is and all these environmental issues. And what this will do is consultants will come in, they'll actually do a full assessment of the building and the property and give us a report that says exactly what the problem is. So, we can, you know, any rumors out there that are way out of line, we can say, you know, this is, this is what the extent of the problem is. So, hopefully, it won't be as bad as what a lot of people say and we can kind of quell some of those rumors in that way. The trails project is ongoing, there's a strategic doing group that's continuing to figure out how to do trails in Sylvan, Barnard and here in Lincoln. And they're a pretty good group of gung-ho people, so I feel pretty good that that momentum on that has continued.
What kind of turnout did you get on Wednesday, last Wednesday?
Last Wednesday.
Did you have this strategic doing?
Nope, the third one is the end of January.
Oh, is it the end of, okay, good. I thought I had missed it, because in the email, it said something, but maybe you sent it on Jan, on that day? Because I thought, oh no, I missed it, but it's the last Wednesday in January?
Yes, if that's the 31st.
Is the follow, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, at that meeting, the idea is for each of these strategic doing groups to kind of come back together, report out what they've been working on. I'm not sure what else, I need to contact a couple other economic development people who, where they've had their third meeting to kind of say, so what can I do to help prepare, what's going to happen and so forth. But yeah, that's, that's still coming up.
Okay, good.
A couple other things, one, I guess one role that I feel economic development, we're here to play is, we don't necessarily have a lot of grant funding. We do have loan funds, but our grant funds are super, super tiny. But to try and connect businesses with other opportunities that are out there. So, we were able to connect two businesses to jumpstart Kansas grants. It was, it's a new program that was put out by the Department of Commerce. So, two businesses were able to receive $5,000 for some of the business expansion and improvements that they were going to make. And then also, the USDA has a Rural Energy for America program. And this past year, we were able to help one business get a grant to do some energy efficiency upgrades. Another business, they've applied and it's not going to be until the spring before they find out whether we get that one or not. And I'm starting to work with a new business to, just to see if what they are wanting to do is eligible for the program. But that's one where, you know, any business that's thinking about making any energy efficiency upgrades, whether they want to make an upgrade or it's simply a replacement of a boiler, you know, they know they have to do that. So, there's funds out there that even though they have to do that, as long as they're going to get a new one that's energy efficient, maybe we can tap into this program to help them pay for that. And I guess one kind of final thing is Barb retired at the end of August, and so, that's kind of made a few changes in the office. Jean Krangle is, has been hired to do our bookkeeping for us, so I'm happy about that. She's, she's given me a lot of tips in terms of kind of better allocating money and kind of tracking things and she'll, just with the loans and that we have to track and everything, she's been very helpful for that. But then also, Chris Heindy, being a part-time marketing coordinator, has helped in terms of doing website updates and things that were able to kind of take off my to-do list so that I can concentrate on some other things. So, that's just kind of a quick update on this past year. A couple of things coming up. A couple of weeks ago, well, you probably heard that Tyson, or Concordia, Cloud Corp is in the process of trying to recruit Tyson Foods to Concordia. And so, I've been paying attention to that whole process. Who knows whether they're going to be approved for it or not, but a couple of weeks ago, there was some interesting information meetings. I went to the one in Minneapolis and it answered a lot of questions in my mind, and I do think that if this, if Concordia is approved for a new plant, there's some opportunities that some of our farmers and people could passively tap into. So, I'm trying to be on the radar for that and if there's any way that we can benefit if and when this should happen. Got a bunch of other things on my to-do list for the year, kind of projects. We have been talking about the rural opportunity zone that the county funds for people through, with the web fund. We've kind of been tossing around the idea, is there a way that we can help incentivize more employers or people to do more sponsorship of people to get, I think we've got about 10 on our waitlist right now. So, if there's a way that we can get more of those people take, in the ROS program, I think that would be a good thing. So, we're trying to figure out a little bit on that. So, that's just kind of a few things that have been on my mind and I wanted to give you a quick update and see if you have any questions for me on anything or any things that I should have on my radar from your guys' perspective.
You talked about the Sutton. Who is she employed by?
Linda Sutton, she was with the North, the Kansas Small Business Development Center, but a few years ago, they had budget cuts and so her position was eliminated, her territory was sort of absorbed by another territory. And so, she started her own consulting business. We had had, she was part of the Small Business Development Center, we had her here a couple times doing some workshops and working with a couple of business owners. And she's, works with a couple other counties, providing business consultation services. So, she's been doing this for a long time and I felt like I've known her, I've heard great things about her.
So, she's private?
She is private right now, but she had a long history with the Small Business Development Center.
One of the other things, Kelly, that's on our radar, I think here at the county, is the front steps and also the building needs painted. And I guess we're probably interested in the historical society. I guess one of our questions is, do we need an engineer to develop a plan before we can apply for the grants or how do we, how do we get started, I guess would be my question? Or is that north central Kansas?
Well, you could probably, I'm not sure how much they get into the historical grants, how much they do.
Yeah.
I don't know if they do the grant writing for you on that. If it's just the stone and painting, I think probably, and I'm just talking off the top of my head here, but if you could bring in a company who's very familiar with these historic grants and knows exactly what it is that they're looking for, come in and put together kind of the scope of work. You might need to pay them a little bit to develop that scope of work, but they'll develop it a way that's, it fits what the grant writer or the grant program is looking for. or the grant program is looking for. And so they'll use the right language, you know, you've got to make sure you're referencing the right preservation standards when you're doing.
You came in with the two ladies from the state historical society, correct? Can we contact them?
Yeah.
They seem to be pretty knowledgeable about.
Yeah, well, they're the ones who get all the grants in.
What were their names?
Katrina Wrangler. She is the grant coordinator with the State Historic Preservation Office. And then Kirsten Johnson or Johnston, I can't remember which one. But I can call them if you'd like and just kind of say, this is what we're.
Yeah, I think we just need to know where we need to start. I think, you know, we have, we have some questions. You know, I hate to pay an engineer to come in if we don't need to do that to start with. But we need to kind of know the scope and we also kind of need to know the price. I mean, that's.
We're wondering, are we able to basically solicit bids from the professionals who do this work and use that as the basis for the application? Versus, versus getting a third party involved who's not going to be even eligible to do the work themselves. It's just a consultant.
Yeah, no, I think that's, I think typically what happens is, you know, you kind of.
Gather our bids, get our information, say, this is what we want done. This is going to be the cost and we're applying based on what we know or who we know is going to be potentially doing the work.
One thought, and I don't know, you know, how big or small you want to keep this. The ones, the grant that is actually for the brick and mortar projects, that grant application is due in the fall. But they do have one coming up here in February or March.
We're not near close.
No, but it's for a preservation plan.
Oh, I see, okay.
So what, you can actually apply for a grant. So if you wanted somebody to kind of look at the big picture, what is the long-term preservation plan of the courthouse itself? You know, where maybe it's beyond just the steps and painting, but it's talking about the windows, it's talking about HVAC, it's talking about all sorts of things. That, that becomes a much bigger project. But you can get a grant to hire a consultant to put together the phase one, phase two, phase three, ten-year plan for everything that needs to happen in the courthouse. And then you can use that information as, okay, here's our phase one, here's the scope of work, here's the costs, that's the benefits. So now in November, we're going to apply for that grant. So it's, you can kind of do it that way too.
You had Katrina and Kristen and they came and spoke at the historical society. I know I was, I was there for that. But I'm wondering, do you think they'd be willing to come and visit with us here? Or was that a specific, I mean, how, how often do they travel for?
They can, I can see, I have a feeling they'd say, well, we've already kind of walked around the building once, so we've, we've got a good idea. So it might be better.
Maybe we could do a telecom for us or something like that. That would be great.
Something like that, yeah.
And you say that planning grant's due in February?
Yeah, February, March. I have to look at that one, but it's coming up.
Be good looking at it, let us know.
And I think you need to check with North Central Kansas if they can help with this and put some help with that.
Does LCEDF have any equipment? Do you have like an LCEDF camera or anything like that?
Like a video camera?
No, oh yeah, or, yeah, or a regular camera?
Oh, I just, no, we don't, no, we don't have that.
I just wonder, because I, we're probably going to need documentation and someone to gather that even prior probably to, to the bidding.
Yeah, well, that's something, because of my background, I feel like I could probably help with some of that stuff too. So I'd be lucky to do that.
Thank you, Kelly.
I did have one more question. Just curiously, you had talked about forty new businesses in four years. Do you have any idea, I don't remember what the article said pertaining to this, but what percentage of those businesses have you directly been involved with or have been soliciting services from LCEDF? And/or, you know, doing their grant applications through you or receiving? I know they don't all get approved, but.
Yeah.
Or not grant, excuse me, loan. And/or grant, I suppose.
I guess I would have to kind of, you know, some, some things are pretty minor in terms of what these assistance is, other things are a little bit bigger. So it kind of depends on, I guess, what, what you want to.
The way the article read, it was kind of as if those businesses had been somewhat affiliated or associated with that process that LCEDF assisted. So I just wondered what, you know, when you say forty new businesses, what that, really, what that boils down to.
Yeah, I, I would say probably half of them at least are businesses that I really haven't had anything to do with. They, they were, you know, it's kind of like, hey, all right.
Individually established, certainly, yeah.
Right, but others, probably the other half, I would say, you know, I, they called, they needed a little bit of information. So I said, here you go, this is where to look, and that's all it was. Some of those other ones where, you know, we worked with them quite a bit and through the loan process and the business financing side of things. So there's kind of a wide gamut of.
So in that four years, how many businesses would you say per year have actually solidified a loan through LCEDF?
This year, we only had one loan through economic development. The year before that, we've had two, the year before that was two. I don't have on my notes here.
Just, I'm just, I'm just trying to establish in my head just a basic.
And actually, I would say, that's a good point. We do have loan money available right now. Since I've been here in 2014, there were times where, you know, we had a lot of money and then, you know, we had a loan or two come in and all of a sudden, it's like we really don't have any loans available. And so you kind of got to wait, wait for loan payments to come back to build up your phone. Well, right now, because we only had one loan this year and because, especially because of these, this e-community program that we're now participating in, we have a lot more access to loan funding. So I would say that's something I really need to get the word out on, that we really do have loans. And this is, it's, it's a partnership with banks. So what have our loans is typically gap financing. So what that means is, let's say I'm going to start up a business and I go to the bank and I say, bank, I need X amount of money to start my business. Here's my plan, but this is what I'm going to need. And they say, great, but based on what we've got here, based on collateral, all that stuff, we can only give you Y. And so you've, you've got that gap. And so that's where, that's where we come in. We can't just have somebody come directly to us and be a competitor to a bank. We, we come in for that gap, gap financing.
That gap financing money, is that through a third party? Or is that what we're using the mill levy for?
No, the economic development, I don't remember when, probably ten years ago at least, they got a grant funding from the USDA. So most of our loan funding, it is in a separate fund. It is specifically USDA loan fund. So that's the only thing that we can do with it. So the, the money that's.
Are you keeping that money or is it solicited through each application to the USDA solicited from?
No, they, the, the money that we got from the USDA, it was to build our own pool. So we have to follow their rules and regulations of it, but we don't have to keep applying to them.
So how is that money held? Is that?
We have a bank account that's, it's in. And so the, you know, we give loans out, payments come back in, we earn interest on that and so that fund continues to grow. And that's, that's all that that fund can do, is for the loan funds. And like I said, you know, right now, that fund has been able to increase. So we have money there, we have money for e-community funds for loans.
So I'm interested to know how, if LCEDF has its own loan fund, but the, but the county is financing LCEDF's existence, we don't, we don't manage anything that has to do with that fund?
No.
The county doesn't?
No, no, none of the county money goes into the loan funds. That's its own separate thing. So what the county funds go for is our office.
I mean, is LCEDF a 501(c)(3) nonprofit? So then it owns that loan fund?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That is our fund. So the, the county money goes to do office, you know.
Promotion.
Yeah, you know, me, the office, promotion, working with businesses. We do have a small grant program, you know, the business revitalization one, it's a thousand dollar maximum grant. And, yeah, kind of everything that our office does.
You're saying you, the thousand dollar maximum grant that comes from the what?
The, in our budget, so the.
You have your own individual loan ability from your, from your budget?
No, we have a very small, we call it a business revitalization grant program. And we allocate just a couple of thousand dollars a year to that.
Out of your budget?
Out of our budget.
Is that a separate fund?
No, it's, it's in our, our general fund, I guess you could say. So every year, we, we budget a certain amount to go towards that. Last year, we, this year, we only gave one thousand out through that. There's another business that's been approved for it, but it's a reimbursement and they haven't finished the work yet. So once they.
So when you say 2017, we had one loan, is that the only loan?
No, one business revitalization grant. We had one loan, one big loan, and that was through the USDA.
Okay, but your grant money that you budget in, that's just grant money? There's no return on it? You can't loan money out of your budget? You're just giving that?
Right, right, we don't.
How many of those a year do you do?
We only budget for a couple thousand a year for those.
And it's maximum of a thousand? So 2017 was a thousand?
We budgeted for more than that, but we only gave one out so far this year. Like, like I said, another one has been approved, but it's a reimbursement, so you have to do the work before we will give you the grant money. So they haven't completed the work yet. And it's a fifty-fifty match. So, you know, we will put in fifty percent up to a thousand. That is, so a business owner has to put in a thousand. And it's, it's for exterior improvements to try and improve the outside appearance of, of the building. It can go towards paint, new awning.
What's the eligibility of that? I just, it doesn't.
Any business in the county is eligible. It's, like I said, it's for exterior improvements. It's a application, they have to give us, you know, what it is that exactly that they're going to be doing. And it's a fifty-fifty match. You know, we found that if you're doing any work on the outside of your business, chances are you're spending a lot more than, you know, a thousand dollars or two thousand dollars. So if it's only, if all they're doing is painting, you know, it's a fifty-fifty match. So if they spend a hundred dollars on paint, we'll give them fifty bucks. But typically what we've seen, the one that we did this past year, it was new siding, new windows, new, they added some insulation, they did some roof work, they did a lot of stuff. So it was a lot more than, it was probably about a twenty thousand dollar project. So our, our piece of that was very small.
So in the last couple of years that you've done like one USDA loan or then two and two prior to that, what's like the total amount of those loans? At any given year, what?
I would have to.
Just off the top of your head, I mean, are we talking like a hundred thousand dollars in loans? Or are we talking about twenty thousand dollars in loans or?
I would say, no, we average anywhere between just the. Oh, actually, we average anywhere between probably seventy-five thousand to two-hundred thousand a year in loans. And that's just of the four years that I've been here, that I'm kind of tracking. So it all kind of, it depends on what people are trying to do. I know there's a couple of businesses out there that have kind of expansion plans in the works. And I know, you know, a couple of them have asked me. And so it's kind of like they're on the radar, that they're kind of getting their ducks in a row. And I'm not sure if it's going to be next month or six months from now or even two years from now, when they're going to be ready. But, but there are some kind of on my 2018 watch list for, for helping out in that way.
Thank you for sharing. That helps me understand it a little better.
If you have any other questions, just feel free to stop by or email or whatever.
Thank you, Kelly. Appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
David?
Hello.
I was coming before the commission this morning to ask if I could attend a training out at the Cersei site in Pueblo, Colorado again for a leadership course. It's not currently offered in the state. Again, the training that I'd be looking at would be a week's worth of training, October first through the fifth would be my first choice. Or my second choice would be November fifth through the ninth. The whole application process, I've already done the application, printed it off, but I need to have the commission chair's signature that I can send it out to the state training officer with that. Then she will sign off on the form and it will get sent to the Cersei training site in Pueblo, Colorado. Again, that training is all funded through DHS, the Department of Homeland Security, and it's all reimbursable to the state. Again, I would ask that I be able to take my, my county vehicle out at that time, cheaper than flying. And last, last year when I went to that hazmat tech class, ended up making the county two hundred dollars just because of the per diem rate that the feds have and the money that was spent. So I'm just asking for your permission, the signature on this that I can forward to the state training officer.
I thought this, I thought you had a four-session training that was going to.
That's basic academy that's offered through the state this time. It's a division of Emmitsburg. This is more specific incident-based training. As far as incident command and the structure of command, your, your working groups, your, your command, your safety officers, and you're working with the hazmat tech team that's out there training at that time also. Again, we don't have a hazmat tech team here in this region. The closest tech team that we have is in Salina. But again, command structure would be involved with communicating with them also. Again, all this training is reimbursable through DHS.
I guess as long as the state's reimbursing, I don't have a problem with you going. You hope you never need it, but chances are you may at some time, so.
Can we decide this at a later date since it's January and this isn't until October?
That's fine. Again, I was just trying to get my name in, in the pool because again, the classes fill up and then you get bumped around or back or whatever. Again, my, my training dates that I have, have requested. And again, that's through the Cersei site out in Pueblo. Again, once the training officer from the state signs off on it, then it just waits, names in limbo until that date. Then you get contacted, the closer training is as to, you have to go through a process of, you still have to get airline transportation from wherever the closest airport is. And when I was out at Cersei last time, a fighter chief from McPherson told me that you can fly out of Salina also. But again, I don't know what that travel rate is. And the lesser of the two, the travel rate and the reimbursement for the rental car is.
But you were going to drive a county vehicle?
I was planning to, yes. But you still have to go through this, this process that, that they have to, to be able to even accommodate with driving your own personal vehicle or government vehicle, yes. So again, I was just wanting to have it, have it in place. And again, if anything changes, I can contact you folks also.
Could we maybe do this at the end of the month or something? So we can do the job description?
I don't have a problem. You're going to wait a couple of weeks. It's not going to make a big difference for a couple of weeks.
Sure, sure, okay.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Don, why don't you schedule that for the twenty-eighth? I believe it's Monday.
Thank you.
Thanks.
David, before you leave, burn ban, we, we lifted it.
Yes, sir.
I think you need to monitor the situation when we need to put it back on.
I'll be communicating with the chiefs and weather also.
Okay, yes, please, please keep, keep that communication open. There doesn't appear to be any moisture inside.
Yes, sir.
Was there a fire this morning?
I don't believe so. There may have been a controlled burn.
Mike, do you need something?
Just a couple of things, it won't take much time.
Okay.
We.
Morning.
Michael Davis. Up in his first year.
December sixth.
December sixth was for his yearly.
Oh, really?
First year with the office, so.
Need a year's, and how much is that? Twenty-five cents? And he's successfully doing what we need to be doing?
Yes, yes.
All right, okay.
Any issues with him at all?
Okay. Do I have a motion to grant Michael Dale his year, after his year of completion, raise?
I say move.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Been moved and second, Michael Dale will be given twenty-five cent raise on the completion of his year of service to Lincoln County. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion is carried. Something else?
Yeah, we just wanna, uh, bring you up to date on, on our, uh, office cases of two thousand seventeen. We had, uh, seven thousand four hundred and thirty-seven total calls of service. I'll leave this with you here.
Okay.
We worked, investigated four hundred and twenty-six cases that resulted in criminal charges or possible criminal charges. We had a hundred and ten motor vehicle accidents we investigated, and we served two hundred and ninety-two civil papers. And we, uh, booked in a hundred and sixty arrestees in the jail. So, we were busy.
It's a busy year.
Yes.
What, uh, how many do we have in visiting us now?
We have four up there right now, and I think next week, when Judge Cundy comes in, we may lose one or two.
I see, okay.
Any progress on our deputy?
Not yet.
Or jailer, either?
We're getting a few applications, but probably nothing that's worth looking into.
I guess the other thing, yeah, tragedy in Wichita, are we? I guess, are we, I don't know what you can do to prepare for something like that, but I guess, that, that, that's unbelievable.
Yeah. False that on training and-
Yeah.
You know, every situation's different, but-
Yeah. Is there no way to know where those calls come from when they come in on, like that, do you know?
They were able to work with the, the V O E company, I think, and trace it back to Los Angeles where the call came in.
But I mean, the nine-one-one person had no idea that it was not from the area, or, you know?
I, that I don't know.
I don't know how their system works down there.
If it's a local call, it, it shows up, you know, on our mapping, as far as out of state, I don't think it'll show up.
It'll show up, I see, okay, yeah, yeah, okay. I, I just was curious, because I wondered-
And I don't know how he's able to call nine-one-one from California if he just called the direct line to Sault Ste. County, I don't know. You know, and it reports of something that's serious, you know, you're-
And to have that address, I mean, that's, that's, that's another unbelievable thing that's precise.
That's the world we're going to, everything's more cyber.
Yeah.
Cyber crimes, cyber, it's, we're way-
Yeah.
Behind the able on that, it's ever-changing. Law enforcement isn't what it used to be.
No.
No, not at all.
Well, thank you, Mike.
That's all we have.
K Camp, work. K Camp was in last week or the week before, I don't remember, and they had a, uh, tuition reimbursement program.
They emailed us about that.
Did you, okay, all right. I don't know if there's anything-
He said that some of the classes do count as your continuing education.
Yes.
And I think that financially makes a lot of sense. I don't know how good the material is, that's up to you guys, but-
You're aware of it, that's what I wanted to make sure you were aware of.
As many free classes as we can in the area, there, there is a lot offered, so. Sometimes the, the more educational ones cost some money, so, but the reimbursement-
But you guys were also the only department, um, utilizing some of that reimbursement money, so, thank you. Makes sense.
Any way to save some money?
Yeah. Thank you.
There you go.
Morning, Deborah.
Good morning.
Where do you wanna start?
Um, well, we can, how about we start, um, I was wondering what our plan was for our cost of living? For this next coming year, um, longevity pay is supposed to be issued by the fifteenth of January. With Martin Luther King being on the fifteenth, we'll issue it on Friday, the twelfth.
Will that be direct deposits, or will that be checks?
We normally do a check for that, rather than direct, the direct deposit, we've always done it that way. So we would issue them and mail them out that day. So the question would be, is it your intent to do cost of living prior to that, or after? Are you gonna think about it?
Um, well, that won't affect, would that affect?
Yes.
It will affect.
Because it's based on whatever their wage is, so it will-
At present time.
Yes.
So we, I guess, I guess my personal opinion would be that we would wait and set that wage after.
Okay. And most years, I think you do it before, but you don't have to.
I guess, I, how, do you know how, how much is this longevity pay, you have a question?
I, I'm, no. That one got there, I'm doing the quarter and the year end, so I need everything done, so that I can do it here on the twelfth.
But we need to establish that, um, increase in wages before-
Normally, when you set the cost of living increase, you set their wage as of-
January one?
The first paper being twelve twenty-six. Yes, so then, therefore, it's the wages for the entire pay period.
All right, okay, okay.
So then if you do it after we do longevity, it could be-
We could have a problem.
Yes.
I understand that, okay. I, I'm sorry, I didn't understand the, the philosophy there.
Excuse me, that's okay.
I guess I was thinking I'm doing it based on the year ago salary, the last year's salary.
If you do the cost of living after it, then it will be based on their wage from, yes, last year. And I think most years since we've been doing it this way, you've tried to get it done before I issue longevity.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I don't think, well, I guess, what is your, your feeling? I think we kind of budgeted for fifty cents-
You did.
In order to compensate for what the insurance costs were going to increase to the employees.
That's a decision for you guys to make. As long as I know what your intention is before I process, you know, you wouldn't have to, well. If you knew today, then we have the reservation ready for you to sign next week.
Okay, yeah.
But that doesn't mean you have to know today. It would just be easier than trying to get it done the same day.
I think it might be a good incentive, um, for the department heads to do their employee evaluations, if we do the cost of living increase after the evaluations come in. You know, we've talked about how we don't have quote-unquote "the money" to do pay raises based on merit, but here we are, ready to give a blanket raise across the board, and we're also in the process of trying to, um, implement these evaluations. I think it might go hand in hand. It would be very prudent to kind of establish that as a precedent.
I think that there's, that, that's probably true. I think part of the problem is, is that the majority of the department heads, it's been so long since they did the evaluation, um, that they're gonna need some time to be able to do that. Um, and I don't think there's any way they're gonna get them done in time for you to do a cost of, if you intended for them to be done in time to do their cost of living increase. I don't think that they're prepared. Um, I think they're gonna need some time. Because like I said, some of them have either never done them, or have done them, haven't done them in so long, it's gonna be a process. And I think that for some of them, just my opinion, was that perhaps you guys were gonna do the department heads first, and then they would do their employees, kind of give them like a step in the right direction, kind of help them with what it is that you're wanting to see, because some of them haven't done them in years, if ever. And if we're gonna do evaluations, then I think we need to do them right. And, um, I don't know if some of them want some training on how to, to help them do that process, and do that process well.
Well, I don't know, I mean, I understand what you're just talking about, but we're talking about a cost of living instead of a merit increase, so.
I, I understand that, I'm just saying, some of the discussion from two thousand seventeen was, oh, well, we can't do merit raises because we never have enough money. But for the last ten years, all except one year that I've seen, there was a blanket-
Yeah.
Cost of living increase. Now, I understand that's been customary here, but you have to understand, in the private sector, there are people that go without raises, ever. I mean, there are private businesses, and you own it, and you make less money the next year, just because of supply and demand in the economy. So, the mentality that we just always, always get a larger, a larger wage is not necessarily, um, feasible. So, if we were to try to transition that cost of living increase into a merit-based pay increase, I understand a lot of people go, pf, at twenty-five cents an hour because their health insurance went up, or because some other expense, um, is out there. But that's just the reality.
I don't think that any of the department heads would be against doing their, an evaluation, that they just, I don't really think we'll do it in two weeks.
I understand that.
And I think that it's gonna be a process, I think some of them are gonna need some training. Um, I think that, I, I, how long has it been since you guys did that? I just, I think you need to do it and do it right.
I understand that, and I'm not-
Absolutely, not opposed to the change, but-
I'm not saying it needs to happen and do it sloppily right now, I'm just saying, we, we have the unique ability at this moment to transition from what we're calling cost of living into merit. And if we take that opportunity to make that into a positive thing, I mean, it's been budgeted, so, it's, it's at our discretion when and how to use it. And I don't think it needs to just be slapped on right now at the beginning of the year, just to save face. I mean, it's a pretty cer- secure job to work for the county and have, I mean, a really good health insurance plan. I know the cost has gone up to each employee, but the options that they're given versus what's out there for an individual are, there's a huge discrepancy there, and, and it's in the favor of being a government employee, I can assure you that.
The reason for the year of the cost of living raises is because several years ago, we found that we were four or five dollars an hour behind private jobs. So we started a slow process of trying to catch up, to get our wages comparable to the private sector. But the private sector has also increased wages through those years, and we still aren't caught up to private sector, most, most jobs around that I'm aware of.
Hmm, that's not quite true, because when you look at what an individual is paying for their own health insurance plan, it's two and three times what they have to pay out of their wages here. So, there's a couple dollars an hour difference just in that. I mean, if you make twelve dollars an hour for the county, and you have a family plan, you're making twenty-two dollars an hour. So, I, I would challenge you to find someone who makes-
You wanna compare that to the wages they get at Great Plains, or Sunflower, or places like that, you're gonna find that we're not equal.
Twenty-two dollars an hour?
Yeah.
I know that welders are making maybe twenty-five, m- maybe. And that's, that's a welder who-
They also have benefits.
They're also paying on those benefits, that's not just a provision of their job, like it is here. I mean, it's been a ninety percent coverage here, you don't get ninety percent coverage. I'm, I'm pretty much absolutely sure that there are very few companies out there offering ninety percent coverage. You're saying Great Plains offers ninety percent coverage at twenty-two dollars an hour?
For the employee themselves, they are.
I don't know what Great Plains is offering in terms of that, but yes, there are some of our employees that could go to other jobs and make significantly more per hour, and yeah, probably pay a little bit more for their insurance. But in the end, they would determine whether they'd be better off there or here. And at twenty-five dollars an hour as a welder, that's ten dollars an hour more than they probably make for us. They could afford to pay a little more for their health insurance, but that-
It's not so much that they could go there, it's the fact that we're almost constantly looking for help. And we can't hire someone away that's got a twenty-five dollar an hour job.
Well, there is some discrepancy about the high turnover that we have. I mean, you can't just blame it on wages, because we have some people that have been here for twenty years, and they're still making only what a new person is making, because that minimum wage and, um, the, the present day, you know, starting wage is now what they've gotten, you know, accrued to over those many years. So it's not just pay rate that keeps us at a high turnover. There's definitely some mismanagement going on in certain places where people have been reluctant to work or stopped working because they didn't wanna work for a particular department anymore. So, you know, there are some issues there. Other, other departments, we've had high retention, I mean, when's the last time, when's the last time you had to hire for the health department? It's been a long time, am I correct?
Actually, we've cut back services to the health department tremendously.
Rather than hiring the last time somebody left, we, we eliminated a physician.
Well, we're already, we're the largest employer, we are the largest employer in Lincoln County, so that's not necessarily like, uh, a huge disappointment.
You asked when the last time was that they hired, I, when the last employee left, we reduced their force, we cut back there, rather than hiring.
How many years ago was that?
Not that long, two?
Two years ago?
At tops.
Okay.
I, I'd have to look and see what time, when it was that the last employee left, but it's within two years.
Yeah.
So instead of hiring, yeah.
Well, as our population decreases, I would think that you wouldn't need as many people to service them. You know, we, we've been losing, uh, over one percent a year, so. You know, there are less people to actually provide those services to, we don't need to keep increasing employees in those types of departments.
They were increasing, they decided to reduce, rather than maintain their level of-
Our whole county, our whole county is reducing.
They stopped doing home, uh, farther home visits.
Because there was others, the other services, other agencies that-
Other companies that got into the business, and the grant funds were gone from it.
This is gonna sound extremely sexist, and I apologize in the midst, but most of our reach, turnover rate is in men, who are, you know, feel like they should be the breadwinner for their families. And the women work here for the lower pay because they get the health insurance.
The second income.
Second income and the health insurance, yeah. And that's, that's why we don't have a lot of turnover in the women's, especially office staff.
And the health department. Most, yeah, they're the breadwinners, they're the, they're the insurance provider. Every department and every employee's situation is different, so, but, you know, you just need to let me know what your intention is in terms of cost of living, and how you want to, or don't want to handle that, or what you want to do. And in terms of the evaluations, I think it's a good thing, I don't think it's a bad thing. I don't think the department heads feel that it's a bad thing, I think they just want some preparation, and to be able to do it, and to do it well.
What I'm saying, though, is if we blanket this fifty cents at the beginning of the year, there is nothing as an incentive when those evaluations come in. If we were to split it in half, give the twenty-five cent, you know, I'm just throwing a number out there, but let's say, split it in half, you give the twenty-five cents as the cost of living, a month or so down the road, when we finish these evaluations, you can give that merit increase, and call it a merit increase, and give it some value. And that's, in my opinion, a reward, not only for completing the evaluations, but for those who have been here and can see that that process means something. I mean, if your work ethic means nothing, and Joe gets a raise at the beginning of the year, just like you did, and he's brand new, or shows up late all the time, and you have worked here quite a lo- quite a while, and have put your, you know, sweat and blood into it, that's not necessarily a fair evaluation. So I'm just trying to throw in some ideas where we could have a compromise to give some incentive a- as to that, that specific, um, process, you know, I mean, next year, I mean, if we budget in twenty-five cents or fifty cents, and you just keep doing that every year as it's been done for ten years, it really doesn't have any meaning to it. When you use the word merit, it has meaning to it, and you can-
Again, the, the cost of living raises that we gave in the past, where we try to get our, our wages up equal to, or close to, the other employers in the area. That's the reason that, that the increases were put in. You can't hire people away from other companies when you can't come even close to matching the wages.
Wait, this may be a difference of political philosophy, but it's my philosophy that you don't work in government to make more money than the private sector. That's just-
Along with that, that maybe what Terry's, um, trying to say is-
Well, I don't think we have forty people that have been coming volunteer their time to work for that.
It's not a volunteer situation, Terry, and you know that, we each make a thousand, over a thousand dollars a month.
If they can make a hell of a lot more money someplace else, then it's, it's something.
Something that maybe he, um, didn't get out well. Um, when we do give the cost of living, we, we have, for quite a while, we used to not, but we have been making it a customary practice that when you increase the cost of living, we're also increasing the starting wage. And I think that's maybe what Terry's trying to get at, is that he wants, and if I'm wrong, please tell me I'm wrong. I think maybe what he's trying to get at is that it's also important to him that not only is it that it's a cost of living, but that we're increasing the starting wage, so we can maintain some form of competitive competitiveness to try to draw the best quality employees that we can. And, and I could be wrong, but I think that might be where he's going at, is that he wants to make sure that we're also able to increase that starting wage to draw those employees in.
I understand that.
Stay comparable with like counties to neighboring counties.
Okay, but we can't compare ourselves to neighboring counties. You don't have the population, you don't have the services, you don't have the private sector to even support that comparative situation. I mean, Lincoln County, I, no one in this room seems to want to admit to this, that works for Lincoln County, but we are an island in the middle, that, you can't find a comparative situation, and we always wanna say, oh, Celine County this, and, and Russell County that.
Actually, I don't. I like to compare us to a town. Like population and like size is what I look at when I start looking at things like that.
To get hundreds of miles away to do that.
Jewel County, um, I can't think of one of the other ones. Jewel is one that is somewhat comparable. I'd have to, um, there's a report that gets put out every year.
We are functioning very, and, and I've, I've been to the conferences and talked to the people from out west. We are functioning very similarly as they do out west of here where there are very few populated densely, um, you know, urbanized areas. So that being said, we cannot just continually say, well, we don't pay as much as Celine. It's not going to happen the way that this, the situation is.
But you're, in this day and age, you're competing against companies in Mitchell County, Mi- Ottawa County, Celine County, Russell County, Ellsworth County.
But where are you gonna get the money to do that, Terry? Because you can't keep taxing just the landowners to provide competitive wages for government employees. It doesn't work. That is not a balance. I mean, there has to be a little bit of flex here. It's not just, well, we don't pay as much as Ellsworth County, so we're just gonna give a blanket raise to everyone, whether Joe deserves it or not. That's the philosophy here.
The question that I have, if I may ask, is what is our biggest asset? As far as the county goes, what is our biggest asset? Is it employees or is it equipment?
It's employees.
And-
Financially, are you talking?
What is our biggest asset?
Are you talking about a fiscal, a fiscal asset?
Fiscal asset in productivity. What is our biggest asset?
Productivity or financial assets as in quan- quantity?
No.
You can't use the word asset and just say what's an a- there are different types of assets.
What, what is, we provide a service. County government is a service. We provide a service to the people based upon their wants, needs, desires, et cetera. What is our biggest asset as that employer to the people, our employees are? And I'm not saying what you're suggesting is a bad thing. What I would suggest is that maybe you enact that or come up with a plan to enact something similar to that for the twenty nineteen year. You don't decide on January second, when we normally give cost of living raises in January to our employees who just saw, I'm sorry, I think my health insurance thing was a hundred and seventy dollar withdrawal out, out of my paycheck, which is fine. I have no problem with that. But when people were banking on getting some form of a cost of living to help offset that, maybe what the idea, and I, I get tied to the evaluations to get their, if their employees, but you're gonna have somebody who like with me, I have two employees. You know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna rush and get that evaluation done as soon as possible. You have a highway department that has twenty-six employees, that there is no way. How can they function if all they are doing is evaluations? Do you want them to sit down and just to do twenty-six employees? You would almost hope that they would spend an hour of time.
Dawn, I'm just, I'm thrilled that the evaluations are even gonna happen. They haven't been happening for years. And when I suggested it earlier in the year, it was poo poo. So now at least it's happening.
So let me finish. So why not enact a policy to make a change? Have discussion and enact a change for twenty nineteen. And let's not tie it to evaluations this year because there's no way. Do you want your highway department to work or do you want them to do evaluations? Because there's a, a difference. And if you, if you tie twenty-five cents down to as soon as they get their evaluations done, you're gonna have a department like myself that can get it done in one week and you're gonna have a department like them that's gonna take them. If realistically, if you want them to work, should take them probably three months to get all their evaluations done.
They would do them in, in stages. It would be my, would be my guess is that what Michael Bob would do is try to break them down into stages in how they would do them so they would do them, do them well and sit down with each employee and create a process. And I think that a lot of it will be based on when you guys do them the first time. I think that you will, you will be helping to guide the supervisors and the department heads in what you wanna see in a quality evaluation. You know, I, I, were you here when we did them the last time? Did you do any of them?
Yes.
You, you did some?
Yes.
Yes, Michael, Michael did some, but some of the departments, department heads, they didn't. Or it's been so long and they're gonna wanna do them well.
That's fine.
I, I don't think that there's any sense in, in, in enacting a pro- uh, program where we're doing evaluations if we just go check, 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 check.
Just so that they can submit it to get a raise for their employees.
Yeah, but I think we should do it right and do it well.
That's fine. This is the discussion. So don't take offense to me throwing something out there. I'm not saying, you know, but this is part of the discussion. You're saying, you know, several times you, you kinda made the comment, well, why didn't this come up before? These things have been coming up. There's just not been a full discussion at this table. Again, it's one person talking. Or sometimes two, but there's never a three-way discussion going on in these meetings. So I appreciate your input and I'm not, I'm not against any of it. I'm just throwing some things out there.
Like I said, we gotta get through these. And I think that get through the job descriptions and then maybe-
I find it interesting that the discussion always starts off as, well, if we're going to give these cost of living raises. How many times, even during the employee meeting, when we went over the health insurance increase, it was stated even by our chairman that, you know, we budgeted for it, it's not guaranteed. We tried to budget for it, you know, it's always tiptoe, tiptoe, tiptoe. If, if, if now all of a sudden we're at the table and it's like, how dare you think that we can't give the fifty cents right off the bat, the second of the year, because it's so important because the insurance went up. And then we, we can't put any stipulations to it or tie it off to anything. That, we can't be, you know, having these discussions where it's always-
I'm not demanding that you give it and that you give the fifty cents. I'm asking as a board, what is it that you wish to do so that we can do our job by preparing a resolution to adjust the wages if that's what you guys decide as a board? It's your decision. I am in no way demanding that you give fifty cents to everyone and that you give it right this moment. I am not demanding that in any way. I'm here to ask-
No, that's not your place to do that. I'm just saying that if, if that's the attitude that is even out there, you know, then why even say in the beginning, well, we budgeted for it, but it's not guaranteed? We should've just said, you're getting it. You know, it's like pat us on the back because we budgeted in for you. And I'm suggesting that we take a different approach. It doesn't have to be right now. It doesn't have to be three months from now. It doesn't have to be this year. Like you're saying, if you wanna plan that for two thousand nineteen. But let it be known, let the record reflect that the discussion is happening now then. So it's up to you because this is how you've always done it. And if that's what's gonna happen, I'm a witness.
I guess in my opinion, we'd budget a fifty cent increase. And when we budget that and say that it's may or may not happen, it kinda has a little bit to do with what happens between the time we do the budget in July and the end of the year as far as things that could come up. I didn't see anything that came up that would adversely affect the fifty cent cost of living increase in my opinion. So I would so move that we grant fifty cent an hour cost of living increase across the board, except the commission.
Do I have a second? I have a second. Now the discussion.
Do we, Dawn, are you aware of any, of any departments that were deficient in funds at the end of the year?
Not off the top of my head.
So everyone was within budget. So therefore their proposed budgets for the following year should be fairly accurate.
Along in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion is carried. Deborah, do you want to work on these now or do you?
It's up to you. I mean, I'm, I'm here. I gotta-
Highway department's here. I think we need to take care of them if you don't mind.
Right, whatever you wanna do.
Did you send us a separate email because I, I have your old one you sent me when I requested them before.
I did.
No, I got one. I got them.
Cause Terry, Terry said he got his, but they seem more lengthy.
They came out, in fact, they came out the, uh, the meeting day. I had it when I got home, I believe.
Last week?
Yeah.
Yes.
One week before. No, that was, that was, no, that was like two weeks ago.
We will, we will table a discussion of the highway department.
From your, from your email.
Until Monday.
I've printed copies for Terry. Do you want me to print copies for you?
Just a minute. Let me look at the date, cause I have the old one. I have the old ones you sent me.
It would've been like two weeks ago.
Christmas week was Friday, so you're saying the nineteenth? Does that sound right?
Yes, yes.
Uh, yeah, I think eighteen, twenty-four, eleven, ten.
I don't know why I remember my name was eighteen.
Yeah, I don't have anything from you. But if the old one, I mean, I think you sent me-
There were some, there were some, there were some changes in the original ones that I sent you because like Michael and them at home, we're gonna make some changes.
Yeah, there was like eight or nine of-
Seven, seven or eight, some, some of that doesn't really matter. Um, some changes in who does what and where, so we did do some modifications. I'll print some off for you.
You don't have to print them because if there's anything that you can tell me what the changes are, if they're big, otherwise I have this whole list that you sent. When I asked for it, I'm a long time ago.
Okay, that sounds good. I guess I'll let the highway department go.
Yes, thank you, Deborah. Did you have anything else? I'm sorry, Deborah. Was that all you had? Was the employee? Okay, thanks. Okay, Michael, Bob.
Morning, happy new year. Here's a thank you card from our department.
All right, thank you.
Here's a list of members from the state of Kansas using the National Joint Powers Alliance.
Oh, purchase, the purchasing thing?
Yes, I believe there's, with this company, I was unable to find the others yet of the other company, but there's five hundred and forty government entities using the NJPA or they are members of anyways. And Lincoln County's been a member of it since August two thousand sixteen, I believe, but we never have used it yet, so. I also have here for the board's approval to uh send in for a project with the high-risk rural roads concerning uh sign replacement for our local roads, which would be our major gravel roads that are non-federally funded. There's a map of those roads on the one page and the approval comes on this page from the board. And it looks like there's gonna be approximately one hundred and eight miles worth of signing to be done. And they have an estimated cost of five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. And this will be a zero cost to Lincoln County.
Five hundred and fourteen thousand?
Five hundred and fourteen thousand to do all the signs needed on one hundred and eight miles of road.
What, what, I'm sorry, what one hundred and eight miles would that?
They are on this map and you may take a look at it.
And that's a bid through an estimation for a cost through whom?
The estimation was put together through uh High, uh, High Risk Rural Roads, but Kirk and Michael provided the estimate. And this will go and be let by KDOT. And KDOT handles the fundings except for, I believe, the PE or the design, which that get built to Lincoln County and then we are able to submit for reimbursement on that.
And this is separate from the others on here?
This is separate from the others, yes.
And this is for the whole county?
This will be through areas of the entire county, yes.
One hundred and eight travelable miles. What, is, are this the high-risk rural roads company who installs them or they're just a consulting?
High Risk Rural Roads is a project that's handled by the state of Kansas through KDOT. It is funding that is passed down from the feds that they are required to use at the local level. And I don't know how many millions of dollars every year that they're required to spend for risk and hazards within counties in the state of Kansas. I don't know those numbers off the top of my head.
Who installed the signs that you purchased to put over on the west end at the, at the lake de- development?
It was a company out of Pittsburgh, Kansas. I can't even remember their name.
They did the installation for us?
Yes.
Did we receive the product shipped here?
No, they, it's handled through them. Like I said, the only thing that we would be doing is paying for the design in advance. We would pay Kirk and Michael. I submitted to KDOT and they cut us a check back for reimbursement. That is really the only hand that we have in it other during the phase of it. KDOT handles everything else.
Out of that five hundred and fourteen thousand, what if that goes to Kirkman and Michael for the plans?
Uh, design and inspection, looks like it's a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars.
And that's done after the grants approved?
Yeah. If we don't get approved, we don't pay Kirk and Michael any.
When's the, when's the grant due?
I believe it's here in February.
I would like to suggest that we also solicit a bid from a different engineering firm. I mean-
This is one hundred percent paid for, zero dollars from Lincoln County. Why would we wanna pay anybody to do it when there's federal funds out there to pay one hundred percent of it?
Kirkman and Michael charged us to give you this figure?
No.
No.
So then why would another company charge us to give you that same figure?
Through the High Risk Rural Roads program, you mean?
If Kirkman and Michael can provide us this particular estimate, why can another engineering firm not provide us the same estimate to do comparative costs between Kirkman and Michael's percentage, which is a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, which is more than a fifth of the cost?
Isn't Kirkman and Michael a company that you've been wanting to sign a contract with to provide our engineering services?
KDOT-
We got two bids to provide monthly engineering services and they were the lower of the two bids, yes, Terry. So it's my obligation to expect the county to solicit bids for these types of services. You're talking a hundred and fifty thousand, fifty-seven thousand dollars. I would think that another engineering firm would be more than happy to give us a free estimate for that kind of money for a project such as this.
I will have to do some checking to see if that's even allowed.
That Kirkman and Michael has a monopoly on providing to high-risk rural roads? So I'm saying-
When it's, when it's administered and handled through KDOT, they're gonna review everything to make sure there's nothing out of line.
I'm not suggesting it's out of line. It comes down to cost.
Something like that. So you have one company that's invested money to potentially do a bid, receive a bid. Then if I have another company do the same thing, then you know there's one company out of those two that put all this work out there that will not get any money in return for the work they did.
No, that's not how it works.
Yes, it would be.
Yes.
Either that, they're gonna send us a bill for the work that they did. This does not come easy.
I'm sorry, but-
Just jotting numbers down.
I think you're mistaken. If you're saying that Kirkman and Michael provided you this information, then any engineering firm that does similar work is able to provide you that information. It has nothing to do with who put the initial bid together at all. That doesn't come into factor.
If it's not an acceptable amount, KDOT is not gonna accept it.
I'm not saying it's an acceptable amount. I'm just talking about a bidding process. It's a very-
It goes through a bidding process through KDOT's terms.
With that engineering firm attached as what, as what they've offered. I'm talking about the engineering firm that's affiliated in general.
When's it, when do you need the paperwork done?
I believe it's early February. I'll have to find the exact dates. This first sheet's got the, the expense on the two signs. And then this here has a map attached to it and it shows where the cost breakdown is. And then a map that shows which roads will be done and it will be the yellow roads that get accomplished.
What was the determining factor for that particular hundred and eight miles?
It falls into our local road category of roads. The first system we did was FAS, which are federal aid secondary routes. And this classification of road is the next-
What's it called?
Local roads.
Just local?
I believe that's how they have it over there.
Minor collectors.
Yeah, minor collectors.
Minor collectors. I guess my question is, why, why are you saying that because it's a state-funded program that it doesn't matter who the engineering firm is? Why is it not our obligation to make sure that the engineering firm providing these services is in competition in the private sector? I mean-
There are. There's numerous other-
The state's gonna determine that. We're not the only county that's involved in this. There's gonna be other counties.
Oh, yes.
If there's, if the engineering in one county is way higher than it is in the other counties, then they're gonna pick up-
They're gonna do a comparative analysis on everything. They're gonna know what's in line.
So you're saying the bidding process will include the engineers to perform this work down to the inspections and everything else? You're not submitting Kirkman and Michael with this application or you are?
No, I get, I get sent to the state.
With Kirkman and Michael. So they, so the state won't be bidding out the engineering work? Just break- Just bidding out the actual.
They left the job, yes. And a contractor will be chosen, so.
So the contractor's bid, but not the, not the professional services engineering firm?
Correct.
So back to what I said, if it costs zero dollars, it doesn't matter. What we're talking about is creating.
The way that the counties across the state do it is they choose their engineer to use and they go with it. Because they have already done X amount of dollars worth of work towards this project because that is how it is set up through the state to do it. Now, if I go get two other firms and ask them to pull all this information together, they're gonna have X amount of dollars invested in their job with not able to get the job. So they're not gonna turn any bid because of that.
Do you know what the term is for that? Do you know the term for that in business, in the real world? Do you know, Terry? You owned a company. You have to know. What's it called when you do preparation work based on hoping to get business or soliciting an actual job, landing a job?
I think that anytime that an engineering firm does something that is a grant process, they're taking a chance on not getting the grant. If they don't get the grant, then they don't get paid for the work.
That's called a cost of doing business and it happens all the time.
But I don't think it's something, I think the state is the one that's gonna decide whether it's.
He just said though, the only bidding process goes to the contractor, not to the engineer.
But the state goes through everything, every aspect of it. And if there is something out of line, they will send it back to them and tell them they have to adjust.
Okay, maybe we could use lay terms for this situation because we seem to have this recurring problem here. If you have a friend that works at Kirkman and Michael and you wanna attach Kirkman and Michael to this particular application that's gonna go to the state and they're going to be affiliated with the project regardless of who wins the bid as a contractor, that's what we're looking at versus any potential engineering firm, just like you solicited bids for our monthly services that we are potentially able to contract. Kirkman and Michael gave us the lowest bid. If you're doing this and they're charging $157,000 out of the 514, but Joe's company up the road is charging $127 out of the 500 less, whatever that would be. Do you see what I'm saying? That's part of the process. It's called cost of doing business when you do preparatory work like that. And for Kirkman and Michael to do that, if you're making that choice that Kirkman and Michael is affiliated with this application, I guess that's up to your department. But you can't have this roundabout conversation saying that they're gonna be bid out because the state makes that choice, et cetera, et cetera. No, we're making that choice, is what I'm saying. So it would be my suggestion that we do fair business and not just funnel business to this particular firm.
Where'd this come from? Did you get this, receive this from the state?
Kirkman and Michael.
Kirkman and Michael sent this to you?
Or signatures for me to send to the state.
Send to the state. And they were aware of this project, this program by the state is why they submitted their application? Yes, okay.
Are these all gravelled roads?
Yes.
And this is for like stop signs, yield signs, bridge?
Stop, yield, delineators, wake run signs, every sign. But may or may not be in place. It should be up to MUTCD standards when they're complete.
I think that we take advantage of any zero match grant regardless of who the engineering firm is. Do you, uh, I would move that we proceed with the grant for the signage on the 108 miles, I believe it was, of roads.
Do I have a second? I will second it. Is there any discussion?
Who puts the application together? The engineering firm?
And all the other engineering firms probably had the same opportunity to do it, but they didn't, so.
No, we approached one engineering firm is what I'm hearing.
No.
No? Did we solicit for this project? No? You personally contacted Kirkman and Michael?
I believe that's how it would've been.
So again, I'm just saying, this is a trend here in Lincoln County. You have your favorite company, you go to them for every possible government job and they can charge what they want because they're doing the contracted work. I'm not against doing the project, guys. You're missing the point.
Yeah, I did.
It's the point of the way that the business is conducted.
The idea of having 15 different engineering firms doing work in the county is ridiculous as far as I'm concerned.
You're the one that voted against contracting with one engineering firm and now you're saying you shouldn't have multiples.
No, I voted against retaining them.
Right, and they'd be on our retainer all the time because we don't have anyone sufficient in knowledge to head up our projects.
It probably wouldn't be if you started hiring different engineers to do all the projects.
I'm sorry, but that, there are many terms for that and.
Yeah, there's a lot of terms for a lot of things.
Yeah, unethical is one, Terry.
Yeah. I'm sure if it's unethical, the Department of Transportation is gonna let us know about it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion is carried. Now, you want me to sign or what? All three sign? You mean all three of us need to sign or I just need to sign?
Yeah, it can be all three, yeah. And Don will have to stamp it.
What else do you have today, Michael?
We have numbers put together to do a signing project along 18 with our 911 signs. It will go from the west county line to the east county line, which would be approximately 35 locations. It would take 140 signs total to do that. And the materials cost to do that would be approximately $3,200.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? Highway 18?
Highway 18, 911 signs from the west side of the county to the east side.
The whole stretch?
That's correct.
And it was how many? 100?
Thirty-five sign, 35 locations with 140 signs.
140 signs. 30 locations and the material cost?
$3,200 for signs, posts and bolts.
So on this 100 miles of road, do we, was there a number as far as how many signs or how many locations?
It's a guesstimated thing at this point.
So it's an estimation that they did with a computer program? It wasn't a physical sign inspection?
I don't know how they do it.
Who did the, who did the estimation when we did the FAS routes? Kirkman and Michael?
I believe so, yes. They way underestimated it and that's why we got two years of projects instead of three years of projects out of it. Because part of the preparatory process, I guess you would say, that they could not afford to go out and engineer the thing completely until a project is secured.
Okay, so with that, what are you asking the board? Or just telling us or?
Yes, you guys were curious on that and see if we wanna do a project this year.
I would say we do.
Yes, what are we talking about for installation? If the materials are 3,200, are we paying that or do we have the ability to do that ourselves?
No, we would do that ourselves. I'd have to visit with KDOT and see what their regulation's gonna be on that because they initially put those signs on their stop signs. I think all but one or two locations, these signs would be mounted on KDOT posts above their stop signs.
So you just have to get permission and then you can either, like maybe two guys would go out and. I think that sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, I do too. Got to start someplace and I'll start there.
Agreed. And that's significantly less than what I thought it would be in material cost?
The posts are there. That's the difference.
No, we have to buy some posts because we gotta have the stub to mount to put the signs above. But you know, we're gonna be using six feet of post instead of 14 to 18 feet of post too.
And you're not digging.
Yes.
So how did you put that estimate together?
What do you mean, how did I put it together?
For Highway 18, 140 signs, 30 locations, I mean.
Went through every intersection and wrote down the road name and sent it to the sign companies for estimation on it because the length of the word varies the size of the signs, so they had to know that. And then.
So you physically went out and you prepared all that?
Yes.
Preparatory work. And how long did that take you?
I did it from my desk and I don't know, been an hour or so.
And we have no idea how many locations we're getting for $500,000 of that same type of information gathering?
About 108 miles, no.
How many miles is this on 18?
Would that be 32 miles?
But the grant, the other grant is posts and digging.
It's every sign.
It's exactly what, like what they did on the FSA roads in the western part of Kansas.
I understand that. I just find it interesting that now we're finding out that they didn't even do a physical tally. They're doing it on the computer and you guys were worried about how much money they have invested in the preparation time that they might not even get the grant anyhow. So it's interesting that we can physically pull off 32 miles by ourselves with material for $3,200 and an hour's worth of your time. And for three times that amount, we have to pay $514,000 and 157,000 of that is just the engineering work when they haven't even physically been out there yet.
But these are 911 signs. These are not engineering whether you need a stop sign here or a yield sign there or a stop ahead sign here.
I'm not saying we can do it ourselves. I'm saying look at the funding difference. $514,000 for 100 miles. Yes, more signs and locations, but we have no idea what that number even is. We're talking about 30 locations and 140 signs for $3,200.
Do you remember what phase one FSA project cost?
What it cost?
What'd you say, Bob?
370,000, I think.
You're talking a hundred times what this is on signs and stuff. You got hills, you got curves, you got stops.
A hundred times 32, $3,200 is still two thirds of the cost of what they're charging us.
I figured I saw one out there. Here, you come down the highway, you got one, this intersection one here. Out here, you got them all down through the mile. You may have 20 signs on one mile. So there's a big difference in figuring those miles in this. This is pretty easy, simple here. Anybody can see that, but you just got, this intersection eats the intersection. You're talking more than this. Intersections on these other projects.
Yeah, anything else, Michael?
No, that should be it. Bob, you got some?
Oh, not all of them. Been working on some trees and we'd sanded a few more spots.
I have, I have a ladder here.